Malungilita sils, tal public hearing, el al sils, alurun ya kamitira senetra public utilities, energy and public infrastructure, girela telecommunications committee. At tal hearing, girela gial rules and regulations. Al blalotob da ministera obiang ma Bureau of Communications, legal rules and...
Provide a public hearing, giving everyone opportunities to voice their concerns, to ask questions, because this is the time that we can influence or change these proposed rules before it's adopted and becomes the rules that we are... that's going to govern the telecom industry. So...
Maloy se ministere hamal masulang almo sap emal may. Actir al malmre nga sulila presidenta senetano sap elavangeder el al sils. Ma floor leadera senetan, senator Aldabiala, ma senator Sangabao, ma senator Tabalwal. Ma senator sa okno sap ilavangeder el al talyal sils, selmo or ameng sa gial concern. Ma, ahi malmre nga sulila, era domo le mokra di introduce ar atam. Edir albolsa be edal introduce ar atay gim nga clir. Ma sel ku kholbolarura, maybe ahi moru liabab ngam, au turukliliak ngal sumangar nyaku ra. Ahi ramal put in writing. Masulang e ministere ulal iorakam.
Masulang e, emalam chira ateang da. If I may, tirigal adala bureau di delakal may. Angari nga director Stalin Pedro, machiwa Tamol, ma Amalnguis. Tirgaya adala bureaua communication al lulvongeder may. Angartia nga Franka, nganga advisor gi dama a bureaua omogatmaklela gial el policy ser el al donotmokla. Angari nga bebira, ar adel, yek consultant tal diregal bleza on border tir. Base sera expertise ser tir e, angari nga ema ma Mike, tir ganga guk nga sen ta consultant ar sen castalia. Edir gyid ya diregal ne on border lo ngosewa gi. Ma adaniela ngel dimulokoringin standby ra azum, ngel guk nga ra TMZ. Engay gi, ngel rokuil ada amlotma ge draft taiga. E ngia, ai mina kutmokla igan, e ngiam ne draft taiga gi rokuil regulation. Au ulam, nyora tal gobida malo de akasbe el may, ndi algoro angari nga ruazume. Umi, ai mina senator Sangbao, munsabe edal, jo ner gi dalboringa keer el moringi. E gi da, me digo briefly, egua isu lo asegi da kameya amadengi. Ndi sera atenda 17, 19 uro, sera january ra 2020. E tianga sera al makatmokla, engle iluasengirel moringi a bureaua communication. Dosisil time, engirel mogutmokla gi rokuil regulation al mo implementer tal tenda 17. Aklo, dirigal nga ra al sils se, el talgi bal el wa nga ra al gur mastri tirgal service providers. Au aseng, mosabe ela service providers al blul belau. El wal bolau nga ra ar sen base ter tal bureau. Logiwa i gial fees, ma i gial guk licensing fees, marwa spectrum fees. Ahi gyid ya bolau spe, support ter tal bureau. Se nga ra la. Gi da, amal mlangan ta ngatlen aworol bangka mnosabe ela ngosugida ra funding, ma ulam nosabe edal hire, tiragida ra consultant. El may help regida ra develop paigal, lendaga capacity tirigida ra develop paigal regulation. Taman nosabe il help regida ra develop, be dirigal on ti donortira. Aworol bangka dirigal gile ngai il funder gi da au aseng. Taman omreke, e omisera aworor, angari nga certain length of time, e omisera aworor lobonged. El antila ar adada guk la, treen el mosabe eri el meral angari nga skiller tir, maklau de ngertir. El implementa igal regulation el gi da, ngiam meray rela. Au ndaswa guk tal aklo, konson tirgal service providers se etche ra, engga gi da tulig, ma ngir o idem, ma ngir abdel. Tirga om, tirigelo ama PNCC, oblam du lo aseng. Angari nga ababilingin na may, ahi el fees. El gi da, au lu uro olu aseng, mo nga ra abod harao ra license fee. Ma sel guk telal frequency, abodo spe, e man gi ra dal harao. Ahi gyid al tabloel fees, au ndaswa engla aklo, konson, tirgal service providers. Ndi, kada mora detail, ndi tuwa isu lo asa igal. Gi da, time iluuro lapantir, tirgal, atay tirgal, dirigal, namo pato, el BBC tirigida, especially Frank. Ma uro, girel cell IT policy, gi daman dirigal mne involver. Angari nga nga ra al sila gial regulation. El diregal uaseng, al suguma, selo maskama makabalmenta amal molmal, dartam ogim telael. Esel ome ser ngi tirgangal morur ta igal uro, once at adapt igal regulation, mokada mo implementa. Let's say, e wal dartal telael, abodo spe, ringi a bureau lo uro taiga. Al suguma kabalmenta, maskama, malmre, maskama, sen dartam ogim. Eng, ndi mo e ruul dartam ogim. Aguk tal assiste ngi a bureau ra, dalongolir tirgal, el service providers. El se yawal, levol harao ringil, mora i gi dal fees. Al suguma kabalmenta, maskama, e ruul dartal telael. Enguk te ruul dartal telael, abodo, olokor tiru uaseng. Ediak al uas, ngosel nilda, al harao ring. Ai gabol harao, be sera, ai gili ingamartir, ma ai di sela frequency il tira spe. Ma altang, be tianga, be sel bureau, ekatengi dal mosoi sebra al sila, oi ga gi dal el policy, samang akuli tammo kloarungu, demargonye, rokuil ada gi rin mo understand el uaseng. Maharabo do ruutetiyang le. Amorotarium, ma, angari ngi, malmre dra 2025. Eseyo, ongeruul el saigola amorotarium, blodu tulig, ibnombre ka i gial guk tal raget, tolingi tal uaseng. Luutam bol sa mama, telgibat smisi, ai gal konvali, kama ma. Abol mreka amorotarium, eb la bol sa mama face a, ai gial challenge sel el BS, el Aprilo, el metmo, el mo kanpitalo, pung kama ma. Ai ya, dirigal, nga ra la, el diakal, ma ulam a bureau ra el anga, mnesabe el addresses, sel kot, el amorotarium di ti al sekana. Amli la ra la, ma di gi ra dal mengi de ngi il uaseng. Mor se yidye mombreka, al uben ngalmut. Ai gi da bebira, isuul dirigal bureaua, a ministrya al bang. Ndi, me, ebaykuun sa ngale Stalin, ai gyid et ngi matira Franka, ma sab ilmutol smaga gi mo detail. Oreng, somi waga, ade ngalakil mora, keer ma, ngireng haldi, ivmir kama. Di da ita i gi gi, ai gal kalol mal draft de etche ra, ai ga gi dia lule mistir gal consultant, au aseng, uungil domo il implementer tiang. Ma requirement ra tenda 17, logiwa i ga gi dal kalol mal regulation. Gi da on ti donortira uaseng. Nkama, malta gi be sel ma soi sebertiang, ndi restaurant maklau blu ra blul adam, namal molmal nga al siltiang. Ma al sila, ai gal bebira, maklau blu rapasi gi. Ma, angari nga i gial, plel advisor gi dal uaseng, as you move forward. E ga gi da, i gial bebira, challenge sel bom face, manso adal el al time, e bo modengi. Eda address, aksela regulation, rgamiu ma. La angari nga uungil level ra klaw de ngaralbe klaada, adoral, going, moving into the future. Masulang.
Omel naso de minister, ma uera domo le, e gulingite, introduce ar atar, okubutangaseng nga ra lakonvali ya. Are here, emargonye, e, angari nga gi gial sixal regulations. Asumansomiwa brief ra, ai gi gial kalol men, sabela, a minister, matirgangal gura di brief litu isegi uaseng nga ra al sil. Or al suguma komla amuiwe, edi ivmir kameywe, ati, se edal ti malmatal mora question, ndirigal sab edal el rule se gi di. Ma, uera, domo le, bayda bata introduce, tirigel nga sil may, or or amstart ra kameywe, mister Massang, mister Diaz.
Taloy se, solam malungil swelbe, presidenta senet, malungil swelbe Legorgao, macher mira kamiti, maru gusenitors. Ma, rebekla, ta ngakla, adal nga tiang minister obiang, ma direktor, kama msaun mos, iun moskama matealan, metiang. Et tianga concern ra life ra bitokla at, ma direkt konvali, kama ma, il gibla, nga ra al sil someri ngiers. Ma, ngagul, ndaswa se, agi be tiang esalab, usabe dal adodu, eda, ol taikel, korati francisal gi di. Edo omisela uaseng, magara, om help ra kama ma, kama ma, magarakim help ra kabalment. Ngara Alfonso Diaz, el owner ra Diaz Broadcasting Company, komsula.
Malungil odosonge senator, ma presidenta senet. Ma rebekla senator sa nga tiang, ma, a minister sa maradal, tirgal consultant ta nga tiang, ma, tirigel nga ra bak, omisera ruul nga si, ma, Adal. Me ko gumul, ma introduce, tirgal nga bittar nga, ke, ngagid nga bittar nga, nga ra alright, ta nganga ta assistant engineer kama ma, engineer kama ma, merak lukuk. Engel sekana ngi ya chip agantantar kama ma, floor. Engel uonge de ngi ya assistant ra agantantar kama ma, el Joseline. Kama ma, ngartia lult, lo, depesentra Palau Telecom. Madam Chair, kama ma, mla submit ra, comment kama ma, le legorgaro Eli, ai hope kama langu. Ma, agi, la bay, somamal nga tiang, e, men saada daala a minister, ma Adal, il giret tal regulation, samai gial fee, e, osamam la, a comment. Ndingore dingariya comments, okama, nga ta ngaria, gi bom comments, il diakal nga ra, babin ngama le gorgamiu, comments le gorgamiu. Ndi, madengi, il wa i gial el goa minister, blakatak. Ngire dal direkt lol ngosew ra kabalment, miti al adal nga ngi. Il girela, along run, ma luben kutmaklela, tal regulation ra kabalment, tal adorur ngi. Kama ma, sel provider, ahi ramal direkt lorio lo lovan terir. E, tim, tirigel lorio ban kama ma, be kada mitra uungil, middle ground, sab edal ga inosig, a minister. Ndi, a comment kama ra Palau Telecom, ma blakatak. Ndi, adi mayor gura, kameywe, momisertal la, ma regulation, e, la mo design uaseng, komkarak kama. Ade, ndantate, akmal, urenasuliu talteale, madam chel, imba ita kama ma, mel mer tiang. Malungil swelbe, chair, kama ma, Palau Mobile, di, mrasulin, masulin, imba ita kama ma, mel mer tiang. Chair, na commercial hearing, masulang. Taloy, swelbe, chair person, koma members, akabiti, mama, adra PSC, tal submarine cable corporation. Ga gi da CEO, Robin Russell, ma, of course nga, Reinhardt, commercial manager, sulang.
Oke, koma almasaula. Ma, somia ministera, kadi comment ra its regulations, or eng, kada di malmatal mora comment. Ngara kura, daswi ma questions.
Chair, agamesan ngi, a ungila, Stalin, tirgal, adal, mongil, other three tal tal regulations. Akamba, en, ndaswa skill fee, blakatak. Di regulations sa angari nga, al sil kadi kal, kim san mal understand, kala lungi kora summarize, ngin, bodo, tamali. Adi lungi, a minister.
Makabonge, minister, minister koma adam, ahi gasek sal regulations, sa makabong kora di ismao de summarize, ma, kim garam understand, sulang.
Ya, kama masulang. Tim, koro no, we di, tulik, awon regulation, agim summarize, ring la, taitang, ra tal si kama, madringel, medibom. Edi se, eh, taloy se, chair.
Sulang e, chair, sulang e, minister. Ai gal regulations, ahi giblem share, bantit tirgal, maklau service providers, ndi gi mal peramamel metang, edirigal, gua share, bantit tirgal, guk kama, na dekal, si il mes ayang. Ai ga, sixal regulations, eh, chair. Gomamul, omdaswa i ga, gial sixal, se edak, ngasengi gial, trangatengila, tokra, communication. Robul shobaya, au involver ngi. Ma, angari nga, gial duul uaseng, sel duul uaseng, telecom licensing rules. Which is basically, a, gial ulasel the license, ai gal. Ai gal telecom operators, whether eto uwa class license, eto gukti provider service. Or eto uwa individual license, eto provider service, e, angari nga networker tir, tir spe. Se gi di, guk kora, daite ngsel licensing rules. E, se mosma da trangatengila, gial rokul, ade, delera, a bureau al issue, ai gial licensing. Angari nga, sel duul uaseng, guk telecom equipment regulation. Se mal simply da, although mes ay gial equipment, al adol chisbu. E, omesas ayang, ugarat, nga ra standard, el spe. Ai gian qualifier, ai gial guk gi da, abna setal standard. Osisiltam, be dirigal, kada dirigal, omiseringil uaseng. Ai gian, nga ra, guk affect ringi gi da, gial equipment ser gi da, a spe. Gial radio frequency licensing rules, mndirigal se gi di. Se, guk lu uli, gial al gatea frequency, gial radio frequency, il mora, aragroxal at. And how we manage and monitor, ai gi gi, radio frequencies. Gial interconnection and access rules. Lu uli, gial guk duul uaseng, wa tirgal service providers, how they, how do they interconnect? Edirigal, msaang, a gor, oversight tra bureau, lo mes ay gial, el access ay gial agreement ser tir. Edirigal decide uaseng, are they doing it, lltiraq, kora fair, fair market practices? Ada, angari nga, gor, mknitringima, a bureau, agirel mu intervene, help al sort out, ai gi gi. Esel momang last, oh, sel momang, tal last, sel number five, ai gial duaseng numbering rules. So, se basically, ngi gial allocation of numbers, li ga i gi, lospe, wa seven five, ma seven nine. Bureau, nga ra alil, asana i gi, the numbers, and more, tirigel service providers, il tir, spe, gi numbers. So, basically, gi da, keep a register, asana i gi, numbers. And then, last, se gi, fee regulation, which basically sets the fees, ra, ai gial rokul service, el gi da license, a regulate. Angadidile, ngel daniel, ngel gi, kora, journey gi, virtually, ngel, ngel gi, ya team leader, rasile TMZ, the telecom management group, ngel gi, dirigal draft taiga. Masum, kora, angari nga, kora technical question, il, il se, lentser ngi. He stand ready to answer, guk kora, technical questions related to any provisions, nga regal, regulations.
Oke, kadi, kamko over sel fee structure, el basem, nga ra kom charts, eh, nga ra ul kom charts. Se gi da number one. A number two, kadi, kora, small, ai gial equipment standards, el baseng. Kora moringi, equipment, al nga tel, bluril, angal, mutikal qualify, or nga ra, kora impact, ra ai dal equipment standard, sulang.
Sulang e, senator. So, ai gial fees, malbiota, mal dimili ngil motul, badingala fees. So, it's basically the license fees, al gawa, al, al license, al gawa, e, maru ngi, ga i gi, amharao fil, girela, ai gial ai gial license, al gawa. Sel onyeru, spectrum fees, so basically, capacity. Gial capacity, al gawa olap, ai gi gi, omharao. Sel license fee, a base, ra, sel formula, lltob, ringira, gira license fee, a, gi ngilul mek, ma sing two percent, la annual gross, adjusted gross revenue. Ma, sel, ai gial rokul service, provider, telecom service, operators. Ai gial more involve, ai gial services, al gawa provider, kama ma, regulate. Ai ga gi, the revenue, ai ga gi, the service, ai ga gi, yado nga, two percent, ringil, ulmek. But it's up to two percent, ra, every year. So, it's not two percent. Although mes, sel ngasang, sel, a sel, bureau, a batsetra bureau, although mes, ringi, e, wa i gial lulu kominister. Sel sumungguk, nga ra dartal telael, ai gial ngasang, ai ga gi, kada, kada, ulma dartal telael. E, asum, guk ti, albo sumasel dartal telael, ada gal, nganakka, two percent, and ya, aboda charts, rgamiu. Edirigal, di apply, mora, tirigel, revenues, il tir, nga ra, borh hundred thousand. Asup, rgamiu, ada gal, bo dartal telael, ra tarak, ya, charts, le gor, rgamiu. Ah, sel, sel spectrum fees, ai gi, mal di yor, capacity, il mo spe. Ma, gada, di ulmek, ma sumu spe, atelal, capacity, e, gada, charts, al gawa, el base, ra, se gi, the capacity, al gawa, spe. A, mocte gar se, a, trail, help, uaseng. Ma, diakal, adal, or, e, kada, bitokal, capacity, e, baldo, ele, ele, diakal, swal kora, efficient use, ra, igal, resources, ser gi. E, osisiltam, mndirigal, bigos, kada, kora, trail, apply, fair and open market practice. And swadam make sure, asa, angari nga, available, ma guk, angari nga, adal, mail, swal, spe, angari nga, available, sel spe. Se, ai gi gi, kora, ai gi, basically, ngi gial tul fees, el ma, match. And both of those fees, are di mocte, gar ngi, mal di mo support, ra, a, batsetra bureau. E, diakal, nganakka, sel, batsetra bureau. So, actually, a, acta, kuna se gial, nga ra, batsetra bureau, le nganakka, sel sumu, angari nga, baldo, il gim kalekt, le nganakka, batset. Eng soi se, bu sel, with, sel levy. Mo patra levy, ndi, kama ma, guk, kamesing, xendiaka, sumu, nganakka, kara, di, di, gal, play, tel, ngil, di, u, sel mo support, ra, operation, a bureau, morgo. Sulang e, chair, ah, ai gial, ai gial regulation, mmosada, gial equipment. Ah, mal di mo, mu kasa, ai ga gi, any equipment, el mes soi se, belau. Ai ga gi, ai gial standard, del bol mit. So, al sila, blab, di gial, nga ri, sel duul, mu kasing FCC. Every, se yawal, ala, ai ga gi, del equipment, sel mes soi se, belau. Adirigal, ul, imo nga, sel duu CE, as i, ai gial guk standard, del nga ra, European. Ai gia, adirigal, sel mo equipment, el bezalal, mes soi se, belau. Badiakal, imo nga, ai gial Australian, sumu, any equipment, el merura, al sil Australia. Ai gia, asel, be operator, al sila, blu belau. Ai ga gi, tril, ai ga gi, tria, mosabe edal, mo ala, el mes soi se, belau. Any equipment, el diakal, mit, ai ga gi, standard, adakal, sel mes soi se, belau. Ai gial, gial regulation, amal, kowaiseng.
Yeah, ai gial guk kora, siaval, ma taiwama sina, ma karang.
Oy, ah, diregal, dogor ngi, ah, nga ri nga, bebira, equipment, el experience, kama ma, bravo. Especially, coming from, baby, ra blu arwa sina. Esel, me, yang, diakal, mi, ta gial, equal standard. Mndsel mo interfere, ai gial bebira, equipment. Siawul, magi, ala, ai gi gi, del YFCC, le, ai gial, nga ri nga, gial, technical information, nga ngi. Mndsel, men, sa amal, omis, e, mu kasi, nguakara, klungel, apaur, lltob, der ngi. Mndsel, amal, omis, ai gi gi, de, issue, a frequency, mora.
Oke, so, ai gial licensing rules, al akura, adi blakatak, right? Tong, komkora, mataktang, al merula, licensing rules, ma, adi, ar, adakura, tim, tange gi gi. Kadi, madre, ra, gial interconnection and access rules, ai gi, tirigal, kora, PS, tal industry gi.
Good afternoon, everyone. I think, so the question is, just to very briefly talk through the interconnection access rules. I don't think Daniel can hear us, who's the expert, but I'll pick them up from here. Broadly, these rules are really focused on two things. In terms of access, it's focused on efficiency, being able to access what is often expensive infrastructure. And we don't want to force people to replicate it, because in the end, that's a cost for consumers, people, customers. And so there are rules about how you access that network. So, for example, if we have a fiber to the home premise, if we're able to get grant funding to deliver a modern fiber network to every home in Palau. We want to make sure that any operator can access that network to provide the service to the end customer. You don't want to find there are rules stopping someone being able to provide a service. And we don't want to ask them to go and produce, create their own fiber to the home premise. It's neither good for cost, and it's probably not good for the environment. One driveway to every house, we don't need two or three driveways into a house. So, that's why you have access rules. It's around efficient investment, which is designed to benefit the consumer. To ensure that we can have services being provided to customers at a low price. Interconnection is about ensuring we get a seamless service to customers, so when operators can interconnect each other, so the customer doesn't know, doesn't have to deal with different systems. So, we get a seamless service to the customer.
... tariff ringil, sabam ilmo obantrir, laikigil facility sertil ekim haraw. Hmm, krem gorawil direkam amesringi Stalin, mreka medrin ma ministern. Ki tala misra guam, ki di mora selai, maktunel dangarata moni, esel tower ngalili siksik trata bafur ngela, ah gonbali ngarwi, ediwan tower. Krels saben ruin ma isegid ma lagat salam, begaygur tal bulu ra, ah antenna ma leli wek gurt tal bulu. Chokwadi nu mor segid, mlas saben work out, krela, tala gal free, gi haraw ringi ma PNCC. Si rigida horatara, ta kongi kabere, tia bira ra de.
Namawil, selai. Oh, unpar, lutlange.
Madam chera, tia nga mal di ngara palau telekam, dyaksa, nden tria tia ngalbebi, el altaima operation ra, el altaima rabi tui na PNCC ma kama, ma gbebi ra ta palamobal. Agi, china nga kam dangal ya alse, loel, msumu ra tetel. Agi di gakawad ra ourate, krela, angul galke del gonbali. This is ngonil mora rokyak. Disel boh, mo anis temma rego ra PNCC ma kama, ma nek do old, ai ga di total, sedep posigga ngara break even. Tendia ka adma ringi, adma tariff ringi, ma adma tariff ringi, aku, lo gus ekli tiam, aku gus ekli, alun meri, aku pul meriyo. Tendia ka kontrol. Ah ma, aktram ulgoni wasil, tendia ka seela, tal gamitil direkru li alla, lo wasil, kama ma te de gi bom, set, gi bom ni tergini, wek gi da set. Ki kadrigiin, tia gi dal amount ra rate, and beklad al meso is ba ngar tia gi dal rate, il tia galbe ruba, tia galbe riyo, nde indshil mor ba. Si la aktram ulgosi ringi problem ra belaw, kama ma provider, ah umu malmri, kama ma expand, agi gakawad ra tariff eh president rasidet. This is tiam ah, hmm, shobai. Mdimgi ta du shobai ra asil belaw wa isegid, asobargid, il gakawad ra ourate, ya tax ma, tax sa dia ka saben meriyo, nde shisiwa tax, ma igabe bi ra taxel norma, mgleba ilo gawada i gal gonbali. Bolaga, seela i galbebi ra gonbali, dimor wa PNCC sebelo riyo ra blubela. Si la gadi, si fadi, kansur kama ma ra la palatela.
Namsumel e de, Mister Diaz.
Mr. Diaz, I have a list of questions, madimire da answeringi. For example, a question na halegora Stalin. Hmm. Calibration is required. I was working in the United States government, so I know that it's required every year. Kame musbil calibrate, ta igal transmitter especially, to make sure that they are transmitting of their authorized frequency. Because after a while, I get drift. So, your bureau gonna be required to calibrate both FM and the cellular transmitters? Musaben? Okay. Ah, I will. Oi, insabel, insabele. Okay, atara question now I say, calibration is, ah frequency eh, batok ngaria adal gudan el trido, lola, ma frequency ma meo turaba ketetira, mingi da right buyers. Sebil krager ngil wasil kam lamod one year, with that frequency, you haven't done anything? So please either use it or else we take it away from you? Yes or no? Sir Saben?
Yes.
Okay. Gomine president, goramal mori chaga question na. In calibration, did you have, ah, calibrate, not calibrate, FCC consent to, to write this or you wrote this or the, ah, tal regulation was created without consent of FCC of United States? What I'm afraid of, let me give you example. Ah wa wea di malagat chekal wasil, adra amrigel tonge tiam, dia ki amergos is biya ka uura later. Elaki lospe ra adra New Zealand to do this. And more likely, it's gonna be based on their rules and regulations. Maybe, it won't work with the United States government, some of the rules and regulations they wrote to this will not work with FCC of United States. And if not, we're operating in their frequency, also aviation frequency. Did we clear with them? Did we work with them before we come up with the regulation?
Hmm, hmm, dia ka, dia ka obligator de lo ryo lo begela, ah FCC mal ubega da, hmm, directory gi dal wasil omoruro da tala mi, we gi dal waara. And di mei by safranga, malte lingi bil smodi, eng tamal di me, di dimne develo pa igal regulation, albeys ra ten da seventeen, ma yelo omdaswe ngungil applicable policies ra alse la blubela.
Just, the other thing probably to mention is that Daniel Leesa, who is a Washington-based global expert, is, is very well aware of the FCC requirements. We're confident there's nothing in our spectrum regulation that will create any government-to-government issues or, or other issues. So, we're, we're comfortable with the way they are at the moment.
Okay, next question. FM commercial band, is it still eighty-eight to one oh eight? Or has been changed or extended? I heard it's been changed. Eighty-eight to one oh eight.
Ndira ka kalchian, sendigi omes ringil, expand ringil mutal maklo.
The eight AA is operating under the allowable frequency, the eighty-seven point nine? And the regulations that we understood was eighty-eight to one oh eight? Sen, sen kongarani?
Oi, si gi da, sel, sel the eight AA, senatora, seral kotel morior.
Oi.
Eng sel nekotela amle, alaurgi dal operatora one oh eight to ninety. Gi da uspe sel region one, sel, sel region amrigel. Blubela ngara region three. So sel, ki gi da ngar sel eighty-seven all the way to one oh eight. So si gi da ki ramal momesringi tal besel regulation, expand ringil mutlo le gi da ngara region three. Amrigel ngara region one. Esaral ru sel nekotela e tamle beysel sel ngara region one.
Tia gi onit, sabiun immediately expanded tal band widen, but seli tamap tokla adre langa sorir, ki kai wutit within just four band away and ngaria imora radio station ma ki gakawad segi dal frequency ra shiabam amrigel. Mong mal gi garey, msa biu by extend ringi, but supirar beklad al sois well operatora within the band range?
Oi, si.
Please, si, si onit. Mregot tia gi da, atsel ulugori asammasa hal wasil. Memam alaura adal wa PNCC to awdu dele. Asugum gombo thora tower and require more ngia space for us to rent, provided, and ngaria facility, they provide power and we pay rent for that. Mal eliminate segi dal mo gora cluster eh, el lisiksik tabalu. Mong suguma PNCC asa ki gombo thora tower, kama mem required til wasi gomo asil, akamoteita ra bebi ra adel soril renta space. Adak, si di onit. Ya pathcast re langa dia ha require license, tal require fi, pathcast, length only computer. Okay, thank you.
One question na kameu, te unaba. No questions? Alilbo, floor leader Alda Baye.
Taka di technical question eh, eh chief Tamon. El al, si gi don ti, tiga, kmasa bol saben edel alaura, awaya wanal tower la, la bol she ringi tiga. Ai gel, antenna ai gen dekal koranganiya, capacity ringil, masuma PNCC au momro antenna ringi guktisabil holdera sel klungela customer base sertil. Eng sendia ku kamo interfere omrelia regulation of passing gi ral share tal. Se, segora di technical question, shalmal mo create a problem asugum nganiya, ah, a capacity ra igal antenna, ai gi da, a require til el tutap into there, antenna mglel guklo ol create segi dal ku kamo ndai.
Kumsulange, senatora mal ngil question. Oi, til ada direkal taramo issue, mngi ramal make sure al mu kasia, asugum tomo she ra tower, and make sure ai gel frequency ilgi ma saen, mora gi gi dal tower, adia kal, malka yuge, mo bol go sa interference sel mora bebi ra gonbali.
Okay, kampunge senator tabalwal, nden utalma da Mister Masan.
Sumanu minister, tiam na direktor. Direktor aktivo kuduni tial lo bisra, tiam wa se do lo sete ya mo gora, amrigel PNCC gawi amoni.
Yes.
Oi, malwin. El a, kumbeset tial du duga dimzao de tial pipeline ma, ah, galu ru muspali. Ai ger murtra alse. Il saben motomi trirar ngalke da ngara. Agi, ngarbila agi murru tra ngara lobis. Akakon saben mngar si.
El altaima bureau ah, ngara ewgela alla amsa, ngara ela bureau il help, eh, wisamister draft ra cyber security policy, disel mo mengaringela, direkal bol motro kasi murru tra ngara lobis.
Okay. Wa ngar tia minister gawi amakoni te, si saben segi di, el a nganiya schoola, adimrala, muspali ra igal klalo. Eh, mani klalo, hindi kong ngi gi goksi, etam len ma ngalke da ma adra trirar ngalke. Mahkoni ta silamri alaltaima matmu kusegid. Eh, bonsin, kutma kliar ulbera PNCC, msa gombo montar, suguna dimoros ra bo, tial bayab ngal topdo. Disegra viya taima lakam oros ringi, elbonging, tamtam la ngalke de gi da, obtitelutun ma kandari ta ne social, seral ade. Eng malmasu gokli de, akmadang ngel officer na plabulisel memu gurase, ki boonsase, gi da dia gal udragegi. Umrini gi dal dia gala, thodo roni, sala.
Alilbo, Mister Diaz.
Okay, ah, I just came back from Las Vegas. They have a national association for broadcasters. Once a year, they get together. And people from all over the world are there voicing out their grievances and problems. And we were there to learn. Five G is in question right now because the radiation do affect the life of a lot of people living closer to those antennas. Or if you're operating with a five G cell phone and after a long while you use it, it can create cancer in your brain. Those things were discussed there. And what I'm saying is Palau is very small. We don't need to go that high because that's a constant radiation to your body and elsewhere in your body. So they're talking about that. We don't know. And in the United States, Hawaii is five G. Clear picture, sound is good and everything, but side effect will hurt you. What's your recommendation, sir?
Thank you very much there. My, my view, probably as in most jurisdictions, the primary issue around the health of any particular technology should sit with your Ministry of Health. So the regulator is set up to think about the technology and the rules around rolling it out. To the extent there are questions about health, the impact on individuals and communities, it seems to me the place where their expertise is to assess the science and to determine what the national approach should be would be the Ministry of Health. I think it'd be beyond the Bureau's expertise.
Okay, thank you. That means it's something for the, our side to look at and determine what's, how to move forward on that. But this regulatory framework has five G in it, right? I saw that.
So it doesn't require, we set up a process by which operators can innovate and operators can invest and choose new technologies. But that framework will always be guarded around what Congress ultimately decides and/or other ministries determine where they've got jurisdiction. So if there was a view, for example, that five G wasn't healthy, then the Bureau would respond to whatever law was passed about that and so would the operators. But at the moment, our framework is to enable operators to invest efficiently in new technologies for the benefit of consumers and for Palau over time.
Okay, thank you. So I, ah, kamenutlange, Mister Diaz.
Okay, gomine goramal betora, sir nogara. Presenta seneta to make things simple and straight to the point. And ngarati, ah umrangal wasen dira habol time and implementation de tiam. Why? We are still in pandemic. Economy is having a hard time. People short of money. And when this, if, if, implementation of this gonna drive us to bring the prices up, which is gonna be, not gonna be affordable by our citizens, we're gonna have to increase. We have no choice. Speaking for myself, I'm no longer on channel twenty-six of PNCCs. Increase their price, so therefore I cannot afford to stay on channel twenty-six on cable TV. And that can happen to cellular phone. When the implementation of this, we look forward, wasil, they're gonna increase the price of cellphone. And mal important de la, a new norm la, cellphone is the life of every citizens of this country. With economy like this, sir, I strongly recommend that please don't do this and let's look forward to maybe recovery of the economy, which is about, maybe they, we're talking about it, it takes about three, three years or more to fully recover. So in the meantime, let's hold on to what we have now and wait until such time. Thank you.
Tiga kali minister. Mong, insabedel adapt tia gal regulations, ndigel free sama, ai ga gi dal, tia gal besel, al tariff, ah, asabidal dile na implementation ringi, ya kongres sa kontinyul, el providera budget ra bureau? Hmm, sen sabel tawoy?
Omdaswe ng, sabele, eh chera, as long ah, a kongres ah, amalmormal fan dara bureau, eh, lewansel adapt tia gal regulation, emnamo gi redel, el direkal make sure ra adra bureau, amo enforce saiga. Eh, ma fisel loara saida, ndigel bebi ra luula igal, a gi redel, eh bo ngi redel, alhara edisonal, adha gi ngi te wasil, bola, sabamamal. El ngi ti, 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 lulu kurtira direktor, egidomisa, tia gal fis. Akmadang ngisel da du fis, emra yel, lunkutunika, meraltuoyi ma, ngiroi dem. Mong gondongi te wasil, edel a three years from now. Edemel, ngora ngarinya, buj flung ranging, la gi redel mutuluk, adudu ul gi redela. Mong ngarinya timing, egadal amomis wasil. Instead ra di putem asideeng, para sabedel, al formal dungu, emnginya gora tel gibel, el kok, modar sa igal service providersel, alme ra, a bureau. Disel, aptu mo decide raudi. Do you to answer your question? Yes.
El, el asel eh, senor kleyfi, sel ngarinya el angal levy. Sen, dakasabi ulutu ringi yang may ga gi dal fi ra bureau?
Dia ka mal adal haraw ra levy re la. Mong kama ma, direkal tiga malo mesringi, esela domo rel gi redel haraw meri la. Direkal di wa ya, tial komida ra hitra egana mirgi, hmm, may dal, dia ka, ndiha ka udo dralalse, la tiga service providers. Eh, direkal na advisor gi da tiga expertel wasil. Okno gombo kiwa igal ki dal besel, fis adjustment, eng sel levy saben mogegarey, mal uben modiak. Ling, hmm, gora, ngodriri li, lolian ngendi, ai ga gi da direkal gentil ki molail wasil. Ndiha kamata raksuta, gi dirkam kro legal gonbali, amkalam, ndiha ka ha udo del kim sugusel levy.
Okay, ai gi sen, sabedel ma dadura rule, minister eh calculate the numbers and mesangal wasil, what would work best? Well, el atel, tia gal besel fi gamiya ngaria fixed, mang ngarinya beys ra, ah, gross receipt. Mong, hmm, in a way ngungil, eng guarantee revenue kame. Di, al levy eh di face, di beys ra ga gi dal gross receipt tamang, ala se len, tiga kal dekal ina. So I, I think we can work on the numbers later. So, kumsulangal, raise ra isur kawi, miten rubake, eng clo to teller el altaima mal, tona ikana mia kume sa igal recommendations, sel ngar sel babilngi, mng, tiga kal koramal koya may ga gi di. Mong, namatangutlange, ament, o, karo?
Kumsulange minister, no saben tatsu se, se ra kamelet ra ra, ma mebi, mebi gi, direkal mebi gi kri. Chief of the Frequency. Selam, Mister Sel, ai gal regulations and sabel allow more individuals. Ndiha kal dil bo ra private provider, ndiha sebel allow more individuals eh, director, sen wai si? Wai si? Oi. Ti gi da, ti gi da gora, saben, gora tiga gibel, bi gi kri ngilt koi, madam chera, president. Gi, kama ma provider ngara igang la urior. Aso kama ma, ah umu ngar ngisel, tariumel, les kama ma, lisi ai ga lo urior. Ndisugum gombo lia, gombo lia, beklad asabel, emak, sabia example, kama ma, imo gonbali, PNCC di galu urti, kama ma bruras, kama ma provider si BHF service, ma blubela. Ndiha nom, tiga nila ngara mul wasil, tia gi dal, mil alawa i gi dal sabel more individuals, especially tiga el adra, si nadmalat tiam, adimno BHF rokui. Ai gal gonbali rtil. Mong ngara? Ai gal license gi haraw, gi haraw ngura ul, msa biel tal more individuals. Ba di ko tragul goriya, membo ngi la mesringi. Asugum PNCC provide BHF, kama ma mobile, el bo ra tiga i gi, kli dal gonbali, el la ga di open tal koi more ngi di la. Ndiha gal dekal du gi frequency, adira se, msa biu moriya problem ringi ra, ah, alse la, gukmo, ra tarakonbali. Ba di kiosne se la, open ringi more ngi di la. Ai gi da gonbali, ma umad, tru ra igal license gonbali, bo ngiya record ni asitiga olaba i ga klalo, ngara, ngara gonbali. El la ga di open. Si gi da, tarakorakal surungaga, direktor.
Kampunge senor saba.
Agi, BHF eh, Mister Masan, ni gal, direkal sabel ngara igal ngara er, tal do la BHF, aku tilsola adal radio tu radio eh. Alsugum magi ngara eh, ma kose me gortila, gadi adu ul terung, namu giri kal tru kau? Tua, ngara channel, chera la du ul terung, okay.
Nda kal, bulgula camera station.
Ah, si, okay.
Kam gora, kam gora explainer se minister eh se, that's about market protection for, leng, kudkwa i kanal balu eh, asugum arado timel di direct? Eng, sen, ngaraklungyo lel ma, angarakantil. Ai gi sen, gi riul ases segi de minister eh, sabel mora regulations or, gora ngara tetel.
Hey, alu,
kampunge Diaz, kamp et.
Minister, alugori, Mister Masan. Ah, tia gi da example. You cannot buy a Yamaha engine direct from Japan. You have to go through shallow to get one. So what he's trying to say is, the regulator, ma gi gi dal three service provider, it must be a Palawan citizen. So they have no choice but to go through them to own a radio and get a frequency from them or something like that. Because anybody can just buy FM transmitter and transmit. So when you listen to those frequencies, all kinds of people and you don't know who they are. So I think that's what he's trying to say.
Ndiha komsulange, ngiroi dem, akamatulige, be ra gi mo mesringi, tiga, tiga ngar tiam. Egida taram ne mokte kara ten da seventeen, open ra market. Momlo sabedel, rebela. Akumdaswe la kaluide, esey al amne tara igel clone condition ra, self funding, norat tial kotel fiber updatei. Au uli kada nom brurasi. Mong be ra gi mo mesringi, lo wasil, mkarabo do, repet ringi ra, asugum aradam la mo, kuxoril ser operas system rtil waya. Asammasa, mal uben taange, edu du wasil tiga gi da, oledi tagaringi. Ma direkal guktirigel walul kurtira, minister sengbao, sugum ta di uspe ringi, ra du lo ngilil, adu uli tamlo, melulaw risurts ra areo, melang daa obengere. Ai gi, kumsulang, aku motara levela service ama, apalasil moriima. Kumsulange be ra tiga, tiga la, adha ma gi mo minister.
Namungile, ka, kamlutlange.
PNCC and the eight AA is not here, so nobody speaks for them. The question to you, as a tiga triquad, then gi redel comply with the regulations? Sabiul, di operate, da igal soril? Ndiha al comply?
Ndiha, tia gal tial ten da seventeen, ma regulation la, dimosi siwa application la la, marbeklad.
Mo, tomo require harafi, wai si eh? Sula, timlegi da question, sula.
Ding, magasal haraw kau. Eh. Chera, ngaria question na alma operator, eng kadamle, nater Eli, ngar ngi tiga, lekupne presentet tial tora, ikana, ikana mir belaw. Akmadang ngikmasi to, sugum ngar ngi tia gi dal tora kobida ma pandemic. Ding, ngarat trigger eh, mo si ikwasi komgonging, mo hundred thousand tourist, tung, kado ger ling, gora madu, kose mu ngi ngarang, mosu bamil, sugum magi, olbi ra lula momurutila, ngarasil trigger, ngarasil, bo ringi, ngungu, kado kwasin dia, tia namungin.
Sel gi ruk siya president, tegu mil adro olbi ra lula, lula sen dia ka udo, dia ka udo, segi de.
Tak tila dia ka sen, wo dege, minister eh, tuligre komna ra olbi, nde shisiu, me lam, nde shisiu, nde shisiu mora.
Wai si.
Ma, a question, kumsu se, fair question, le gi ogeri, ame gi riul, answeringi, la ga gi kwasin dia, amkowhe de. Etada ndakasela blul melmormal muaysi mokadobe ikwasi ngara kora recommendation kumira turi ge. Se ki da wila diregal bom kora usukumam mokadu kora mudek kose kado mogiril geringa namossebel kwasin diak tana mungin.
Okay, to answer your question ndiaka ability gama mal chekara ekonomir belaw. Magidor rengese omtaba taiga lmongoi luwasi na adisirar turist relanga tirgaha lricher se lowur. Um sumang less than hundred thousand or na seventy thousand we talking about fourteen years ago which is seki da ngara fourteen um less than hundred thousand arrival. Serakar olbirakulaw kimne rich ra highest. Mumlo il ekonomi arbeklada ma riawerir ma tokl toko amle wingil busul. Se ki da do mes ndi ki da lo mesri ringi asen namungin eh mergoet merwa minister obi amal wasi okay diak amla motaimi ekonomi amla improve. Mokami oba albatabal ndiak kama. All right.
Eh minister ti agida kuktiksala kadi saqstarengi kame amamdasu ringi. Uh el angabili am a proposal mo asese seki dil field base ra cross. Ndi kumdirigal badirigal madikmaseng January aniksel twenty three yakikinsel PCHST. Eseyi ki da diregal mo wal olbodo bra net profit bra profitability gombali to include taiga tirgali service providers. Ma kora saqstarengi kmaseng kala lungu domesri seki dil ku albo kora indicator kmaseng alsukum gombali a net profit ringi aku kora mal lungyang en lamu sebel startal per seki dil fee. Mokaramo drulim kama mofer mang diakal sal mal mo brute more gombali. Kila.
Kamlu tal mungee Mr. Masang.
Yeah, okay. Um su langi senatora tiang kama gal gombali kama require submit ah tax ra taiga gombali gi mori il more finance. Tema deni. Akumdasueng aba egidam pace mega decision ki de ndiak do se edulo mula ka egan rengarinya auditar mer kama every year. Um kumdasueng mungil masi egidal albatabal mongoi. Ding further record de kama about more than thirty five percent ah tagarousi ringi misra ngarinya kobe. Gen manada. Eh diregal anga ngela act require tiger service providers tirgalo license services provide financial statements atilmera a bureau bureau annually el kok kama madirigal kampali report more birakulaw. President.
Um te silva lurior eh mal motoka papillia for kami. Mang alsukum ngarinya trigger eng yiken silwasi ngaral trigger angara egal sebel el move forward with uh a tal di regulation nahidamli di regulate the market dan mossebel ngarinya competition. Mang uh anding stealing ngiridal olaval more gombali ra burbelaw so alsukum asbel si provide a service and sell ngara world standard then as much as possible ngiridal favora gombali ra other belaw ling taiga rokul revenue ma profitsa angara alse la ekonomirgi. So in the end then circulate alse la ekonomi rather than gombali ra or blul malotobra ma profitsa tirma udu tirma lotobra burbelaw so um in the end it's it's the best way for us to support a gombali ra burbelaw. Mang akmu luaysi eh di ngarinya kora kamentar kami wa dang uh ti da ti da di kora sumamlo geringiya Mr. Diaz samnetal lo geringi ngage koto kalia insira question ringi. El girila emergency broadcasting. Asukum mori nga kaisambrung le ministeri am kala towa isra puaro kir ma bluram regel and seeldi tobra rokuiel sel ngaral selegal regulations.
Ndi broadcasting ah adimlakal axis bra laam diregal legal regulation aman diakan ah toko ra diregal including ato emergency. Ndi ti agi de senator. Ki da dirka ti dirka me open se line nospe se taorang malan moralwa southwest island. Um mossebelin malap public announcement to rengar sangaran mo twenty four seven. El atediuspe BHF. Ayeg partra granten siabalam noray UNDP emergi se seven point something million. Adiregal ne partra seleganta ah alo aygale esaywena abelaw rokir mokado ulo lobonggela PNCC eh gen modiak adiregal sebel lo mokado ora a tower and mori nga eh gen saywena emergency alsukum maaringa isela ayol tamralme ma a tsunami. Eh diregal ngarinya anemo diregal ngarinya partneri lauro lobonggela PNCC matirkal service providers and send out a message whether in texting aluben tobra eh gen anake. Taiga tobra TV a scroll. El uh giral emergency announcement ngarinya eh gel diakal address tiang ndi koko bisi ki da anemo ma ngareng belaw tirkal service providers ah aku kow wala asel sugum NAC awala asel sugum maaringa emergency rablu.
Kahalil bo nga signators.
Ministera um PNCC ngatiang ah diregal lusisra alse tiang. Di PNCC atel gibulku kora ang baylo ngarinyi eh guk longotmo keda kana se selling shobai. Um am kalamo mubigan sal etil angal more kuk profit making gombali sukum tabil the infrastructure el sugum bebe la timing me meru olbirakulaw eh ma akora di ak pingaba she kuseng la she mo oldu adudu rada longoliwa kumdasueng mo ma ktingul more tensioner kaling ngarinyi sel kase bebe la timing ndiakal makes sense etil aloba de wal more di imo labil anding giril meruriling komdi luka man kosi gi momurilingi ma kwa pingaba rini. Akumdasueng se mal momringi ngaralela director la kora momringi sal seki dil aladu ndi akumdasueng tiadimo klungi ledro kui mang kaidah yiroi dem ngar tiang among akumdasueng the more we can prove anding mala wakamomringi aladu ndi koko feeling adimungin.
Kaponge Mr. Diaz ona mic.
Akulgorengi awasi in case of national emergency when the president declare that emergency all stations both AM and FM will tune in and broadcast free of charge. That's United States. I don't know about New Zealand but in United States when president declare emergency all aircraft, all ships, television, radio will come under the control of the government of United States free of charge. So what I'm saying is just as simple like we have a tsunami president said emergency. I have no say so I just turn on the switch and broadcast it free of charge. That's all I was asking for. Okay, thank you.
Diangunun unun kamente unfortunately ndiakal al address taiga ah ala ma ayga. Mang kadamo mesri ringi ayga sebel malmormal um atmo kle improve ayga luudma regulation tiwa dirka full step rki. Ma kmaligel wasi alo adoral mungee batoka egil giridal mo oh adjust ma bo de eda taiga lregulation rigidil kokmo atera akla hara ma time langara actere lang.
Um su langa ministeri edi concern sel um sel ngarinya emergency eh albebe landi tobra Facebook ma metuk ngarinya tiger kuk other belaw ngara Facebook eh angara asep il momdangi eh ngarinya tirgale kuk dio mesatib mal ubetadi orange ratio. So um seki da ulmesri lkora mal gorengi ma kose it's an issue maybe eh we can put something in here sebel logi wungi eh mossebel broadcast el more aladu le even a foreigner sel ngartiang mal ngarinya emergency they need to know wasi ngarinya emergency. So for the safety mang akumdasueng adi gayidya ndiaka kamentar kamiwe Mr. Matol. BSCC ngarinya kamentar kami can you lower the fees BSCC? It's economic crisis we are in. Can you give them a microphone please?
Thank you for the opportunity to advise everybody that we've just in fact reduced our prices thirty percent. So we are doing our best to make it as affordable as possible. Market conditions are extremely difficult. Um I think every operator knows this.
And that's for how long? For how long does your rate reduction last?
Oh, it's I mean it was announced it was effective um from I think the seventh. And various contracts come into force mostly in August. But it's effective from then on. But we'll have further reductions. This isn't the last reduction.
That's wonderful. So we can expect a thirty percent reduction from the service providers, the retailers? We're gonna ask PNCC and Palau Telekam and Diaz to drop their charges by thirty percent?
No, unfortunately you can't because BSCC's cost is only a small component of their delivered cost. Their delivered cost represents a whole lot of other costs apart from just what we charge them. So a reduction in our costs helps them. But I don't think you'll see it translate to any retail um price reductions. But what we can expect to see is faster and faster services for the same price.
Okay, that's great news. Thank you for coming today. That's the best news we've received this whole day. Um do we have any more questions? Is if is that all the questions? Namossebel close. Okay, ma um su langi eh BSCC we can expect a better service for a little price reduction maybe um twenty five percent reduction if you're reducing by thirty percent. So thank you. Eh minister ngarinya alastal kament paluven somil mongoi please amtunge boda tosim brahiri ngargide oh malmasaul.
Um su langi etcheera etyal taiga lateal no sebel tirgal service providers ama el kokpita kldiberel afternoon eh oda sa ayega kamentar ki dil taiga draft the regulation. Kama amo ra taiga kurbabal asba mamal um atmo kega lregulation andiakal dil a bureau of communication mayga bebe ra bureau ngar ngela ministry. El ultui ra wasi ngara sebel aradu belaw ma kamentar belaw lotoku. Um akumdasueng esel mandiaka boda um su wasi gidingela luula mungir el base ra ekonoming base ra ngaral sebel blu and may lotu blaw la player belaw akwa se diakal sebel aladu. Mang tirgalkantantama are experto dospeertir amal di seraw ololoro teken ngilke teki wasi kong mal lima malas mal di address ayega ngara ten da seventeen my implementation ringi logio regulation ayega opamkotmo ndi kotel clone western momesri ringi awasi abur belaw wangara a geza ringi wangara alavlihu dra burbelaw relakain. Taiga shobai ra burbelaw lumur tal giril ger. Ma dirigal kampeli and more ayga bebe ra blu ngara alse la atyal saprisaner ki damawrisaner. Um ado longitlwa se alsukum ngarinya dirka giridal malmormal adudu ayga uh amiwa leadership ma tirkal service providers edo adudu andi ngarinya time akumdasueng giridal implementa egal regulation.